Uh, I got, I got.
Yes.
We know all about it.
Thank you.
I've been bitching to him for pretty much time. So no wonder your folks don't balance. Well, comedy is that.
You got that TV yet? My comedy voice. Wow. I just had, I just had those moves. Hey, you know, we're having breakfast on the round two. Still can't believe she did that. I'll try to find the contract from last year. We have laying out this like a scandal. All right, well, thank you. For what? Oh, I think he did. Yeah, they sent you the lottery today. They just drew names. Good, very good. Get yourself in, right? Give her the pass. You're sick too, huh?
Allergies.
I got it. My daughter, or my wife is sick.
It's allergies.
You think it is? Really?
We need like a major like thunderstorm.
Let's put a dome over our city though.
We're gonna get it tonight.
Well, hopefully it'll kill all the owls and everything.
Let's go, I think we gotta go green. We gotta stay green. Stay in green.
Yeah, that is.
That's why I said she's allergic to him.
I'm allergic to, I'm allergic to S.
Who's that?
I thought I had the night off.
Call to order the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, first items, the acceptance of the minutes from our April 3 meeting. Moved by Mr. Kosch, second by Mr. Palomini. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, in the last meeting, the, we thought we had the report attached, but it was actually the disposition of properties. So there's some confusion on that. What would ask is that, uh, we, do the measurement report rescind the annual report meeting and then adopt the new one which is attached tonight. So at this point, I entertain a motion for.
At least let him finish his sentence. The heck was this jeopardy or something or what?
I'll second.
He's running a little bit fine.
Running a bit down.
Let it go. Have a seventeen oh four, it's moved in second. It all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Now, resolution seventeen oh five, which is the resolution rescinding before, entertain a motion to adopt it. Moved by Mr. Palomini, second by Mr. Motivaren. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And now the actual adoption of the annual report which is attached. Entertain a motion, moved by Mr. Palomini, second by Felicity Walzounis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution stands adopted. Any other business to come before the agency?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The agency stands adjourned. Thank you.
Get all that, Rachel?
That's good, yeah, I get it.
Very good. All right, good. Just listen to the tape. Listen to the tape tomorrow.
All right, I'm gonna call to order finance and first item is two thousand seventeen budget reappropriation code enforcement mystery. Mr. Farah, sounds good.
Mayor Council, um, yeah, part of the two thousand seventeen budget, we had, uh, we had a title of code enforcement outreach aid. But as of now, uh, he has retired and actually moved away. And what the code enforcement department would like to do is to change that outreach aid into a regular code enforcement enforcer officer, uh, which gives them more flexibility and, uh, have them do, you know, with their, with a little bit of, uh, uh, you know, manning power help, uh, add to the manning power. Uh, this is a budget neutral, uh, budget neutral thing won't cost us. So all we're doing is, uh, eliminating, uh, the code enforcement outreach aid and increasing, uh, code enforcement officer. Uh, included in this is, uh, uh, the out unused, sick leave, unused vacation, that we take out. And we do have enough money to, uh, project for the rest of the year for the new code enforcement officer.
Questions?
Yep, so this was paid out of CBG line?
No, not.
No, it's a regular budget. All right, very good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Make a motion to move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the finance? Mr. Motivaren, seconded by Ms. Felicity Walzounis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna skip down to government operations and hopefully Ms. Porterfield will be here after that so that we'll be going to city development planning which is going to executive session.
All right.
So I'm gonna call to order government operations. Um, contracted with General Code slash Municity or Municity? Which is it?
Uh, exactly both.
Okay.
You say it fast, we can't tell the difference.
All right, there you have it.
Small city.
You're on.
Thank you.
Mayor Council members, uh, recall that a couple of weeks ago, we came forward with a presentation, uh, the representatives from the Center for Technology and Government, as well as the representatives from General Code at Municity here at this meeting. And we've had a long experience with General Code. They are the company that currently manages the city code, puts it online, makes it accessible through the city website. For the last roughly two and a half years, we've been engaged with the Center for Technology and Government through a grant from the Department of State to simplify and hopefully make more efficient our code enforcement language and create a database that would allow, allow all cities across the city at some point, or across the state rather, at some point to participate in this product. And therefore, we would know in Schenectady if we had bad actors who were trying to come into our community to purchase properties, people that hadn't looked up to their responsibilities in other communities. It would also create greater efficiencies in the code enforcement area. People would be able to generate their own permits, pay for them online. Our code enforcement officers would be freed up to do more work in the field by not having to come back and create reports at the end of each day. You could do it on the fly. So at the last meeting, uh, when the folks were here from, uh, those other organizations, we put forth a couple of, uh, payment options for this process, both of which, uh, we feel will be budget neutral for the city in the first year or two of the process. I think we have the budget projections in front of the total cost. Working with Amsterdam, Gloverville, and also the city of Troy, City of Schenectady would be the lead agency in this effort and therefore the other cities would piggyback or, uh, contract with us and move forward with it. So what we're asking for is, uh, kind of a two-fold process. We're asking an increase in fees of six dollars for commits and also an increase of fifty dollars for vacant property registration to offset the shortfall between the grant monies that we originally received and the cost of the product. In addition, uh, we have also applied for a second grant from the Department of State. And if that grant is, uh, successful, there will be no cost to us, uh, using these funds. So these funds will become surplus. So we think it's a good, uh, good, uh, opportunity for the city to become known statewide, also using the resources of the Center for Technology and Government, creating a product that will impact a lot of lives down the road. So what we're asking for essentially is, uh, to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with General Code and Municity for this product. Also to enter into a, uh, payment arrangement with the Center for Technology and Government and to position us to be the lead city for Amsterdam, Gloverville, and the city of Troy, uh, again, participating in this product.
Questions, Mr. Kooch?
Yeah, so do we know, are the other municipalities, are they moving forward on this as well with their presentation and costs?
I think, uh, the only thing that may not be, because there's this kind of a separate deal is the city of Troy, Amsterdam.
And that will not affect our bottom line at all? It'll be as is?
In fact, there is another provision that, uh, in the contract that's proposed, if we get additional cities participate, our cost will be reduced based on the number of properties that are in those cities that we recover.
So if one of these cities doesn't come through? I mean, are they're all approved and everybody's on board? Or they're in the same process we're in right now?
They're all in the same process and I think some already maybe.
But if someone doesn't approve, let's say Gloverville doesn't approve, does it, does it increase anything?
It won't impact our cost.
Okay.
So I noticed on, on table three, the mobile devices, um, all the other municipalities have closer to equal, we have two tablets, fourteen printers. I assume we already have twelve tablets? Like, uh, Gloverville has four tablets, four printers, four chargers. We have two tablets, fourteen printers, fourteen chargers.
Correct.
You already have the tablets?
We could purchase some last year that are being used now. So that, again, if you'll, uh, provide the hardware for the existing staff.
I assume that is fine. Other questions? Anyone?
I'm over it.
For a second? Sorry. It's okay.
And thank you for, uh, tripping the council.
It was for you.
It was actually for Dave Frant, but you know.
And final review is the ceremonial renaming of the section J Street, of course, to Don Burchway, to Don Burchway. Um, any questions or comments on this?
I'm over it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business to come before government operations? Yes, Carl?
Did you pass two pieces of legislation about the general code item?
Uh, just one. Did we need two? I thought it was one piece with those three points in it. Do we need more than one?
Yes, uh, one for changing the fees and then one for the contract.
Oh, okay, thank you. So what we put through was the contract. So then I'm looking for, should we change the fees? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, thank you, Carl. Any other business to come before government operations?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
A little louder on the aye.
Ayes.
It's like Bobby Brady.
All right, um, just put things out of order a little bit so that's supposed to be the only next session. The school, the city, so explain the fees. If you wanna go to further.
Sure, call for order of recreation. Um, we wanted, Camille is here, it's Camille Saznawski, to have a discussion, you can come up, uh, regarding the Simon's Park upgrade and fee increase.
Madam President, this is the Mayor Council. Thank you very much for having me here for this afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Simon's Park slash CTO Association. And, um, what we see to do is, um, increase our fees. There, there are several reasons for this. Somebody, um, increasing janitorial and scheduling, um, managing. It's just, uh, it has grown exponentially since two thousand fifteen. The rental program has grown tremendously, more than doubled. And unfortunately, last year, uh, we ran like, um, two months. Well, the Boys and Girls Club of Schenectady, um, facilitates the rentals, the hiring of the, uh, janitor and, uh, the person to open the doors. And they, they've been doing, we've just been doing the scheduling. And the last two months of the rental season ran out of money. And, um, uh, they were operating at a loss, basically. Uh, it was a loss, but they were doing it in a voluntary capacity. So it didn't impact, um, any of the city money. We, it, like I said, it's, it's, it is, the, the park itself has grown tremendously. And now with the coming of, um, like say disc golf and, um, other activities, just to keep us, we're, we're trying to achieve self-sustainability so that eventually we can be open three hundred and sixty-five days a year for, you know, uh, neighborhood meetings or any other kind of meeting during the winter, ice skating, all kinds of things. And there's a need for more money. And what I did on the, on the front page here was, um, the current fees and the proposed fees. It's an approximate twenty-two to twenty-five percent increase for the proposed fees. The, uh, we're trying to get more people interested in weekday rentals because the weekends are, they're, they're full. So we would keep the weekday rental usage fees that are currently in place. The proposed fees would be weekend and holiday. And the weekend begins Friday by, um, after Friday, um, until, uh, Sunday and the holiday fees. And this is in keeping also with, um, what they do. I, I got a copy of Mrs. Yuna's permit fees. And this is in keeping with what they do. The other thing that we need is to tweak, um, the permit process and to create a punch list. And there has to be some kind of security deposit because we ate, um, quite a bit last year, uh, trying to, uh, repair, you know, minor damages. You know, people just don't pay attention. Can't just pay, can't just tax. They create problems. But, um, I, I, I don't believe that, um, it, it's, it's, it's competitive or comparable to Miss Yuna in Rotterdam. And the only, uh, the only, uh, difference would be for the weekdays, we would be starting rentals at four P M. And that would be during July and August, only because of the Boys and Girls Club program that goes on up there. And, um, that, that could go to like, they could have your four-hour shop, the part of people that are, uh, renting for the parties. Basically, and if they go over, they go overtime and it's thirty dollars an hour and it's garbage in, garbage out. Really, you really need to start introducing the garbage in, garbage out, making sure because the neighbor, neighbors complaints last year with garbage being left there overnight. Um, our, our sanitation department did a, did a Herculean job up there, going up there every single morning. But if you're leaving it out overnight, the bags are gonna get torn apart. So, um, the additional fees would also cover, you know, somebody other than the party people, um, toting the garbage out. And, um, I think everything else, uh, it, it's just, you know, the ongoing projects that we have. Assembly of the Stex Office gave us twenty-five thousand dollars and that's earmarked for, um, elder senior park. And, uh, we have a great committee together and.
Do you know many of those people?
Pardon me?
Do you know many of those people?
I don't know any of them.
Just in case somebody wanted to say their mistake.
But it, it's, it's, it's going to be in, in the same area, basically, as the, um, the children's park that the city made a huge investment in, uh, the playground area. And I thank you very much for that. And the neighboring kids do as well. And that's the truth. And, um, we have, um, a new sign that's, um, soon to be erected and unveiled. And, uh, the artwork was done by, um, K.P. Power from Albany Barn. And, um, Matthew Sines is donating the labor. And, um, Lori and Gagne from, uh, United Business Services would be donating the, uh, uh, financial part for the materials. And all we're looking for the city to do is possibly, um, provide us with two vinyl coated signs, uh, or signs, posts rather. Yeah, with videos on top. It'll really trick it out. Um, and we have disc golf coming and eating country up here on, um, on Wednesday after dinner, or before dinner. And we're gonna have eighteen holes of disc golf up there. And it means more ayes on the park is what we want to create to prevent and to, um, prevent any kind of vandalism in addition to protecting the investment. So, any questions?
So what we're looking at for a deposit? I didn't see anything.
See, and then that, that's the tricky part. Um, that's what I'm looking for the city to help us with. You know, for a security deposit, um, I think if there are other parks that are talking about doing the same kind of rental, if we could do something uniform, that would be wonderful.
And it's, so you're doing, um, four-hour blocks?
Yes.
On the weekends? And then it's just one night during the week? And if someone wanted it?
No, it could be any night during the week.
Okay. But it's gonna increase on Friday?
Yes.
E-sports sets on Friday night? And if someone wanted it for, you know, let's say the whole day? It doesn't matter? You're not gonna discount anything? It's gonna be, that's what the price is for?
Yes, yeah, we, we have to, we have to, because of scheduling, uh, we really have to stand firm on that.
No, I think it's.
You know, the four-hour blocks and, um, you know, you have your, you have private bathrooms, you have your own kitchen to use, uh, the, the multipurpose room is huge. We've had some incredible events up there, weddings, showers, graduations. It's coming along.
Ms. Perez?
Is the security deposit something that, um, we can set? Are we, are we doing to set fees by resolution right now? And is the security deposit something that we can do? Or do we have to have a public hearing regarding security deposit? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. But I think this would be related to the call for a public hearing just had, uh, for parks.
So we would have to, so it's not by resolution? It would be.
But I think as of this coming Monday, if the council may move forward with that, then it would.
Then it would be by resolution.
Yeah. I didn't know if the security deposit was set. Okay, very good.
Other questions? Are this comfortable?
So what are we doing? So we're moving, calling for a public hearing? Or are we going by these rates or what are we doing?
Well, what we're doing is calling for a public, in terms of the, um, security deposit.
Which is what? But we don't know that.
We don't know the answer, right. And then what we're, what we're deciding, and what she's asking today is for us to approve that we would do by resolution and be able to increase these fees for Simon's Park. Do you have questions regarding the fee?
Well, yeah, I mean, go ahead, Jen, go ahead.
Well.
I, I just think some of these fees are high. Being quite, I'm being very honest with you. Um, and again, no disrespect to Camille and then the numbers. But I really would like to see what other areas are, are charging. I mean, the four hundred forty dollars to use that for a non-residential person. Uh, and then just to use the pavilion and then just use, and we're charging an extra, how much here Jen? Seventy dollars to, to use the bathrooms?
No.
No, how much? From sixty-five, well, for fifty up there.
Sixty-five.
And then sixty.
It's extra twenty-five dollars. All you have to do.
Look from here to there.
No, I'm talking about from a, I'm using the pavilion only to the pavilion and the bathrooms.
Right.
The difference here is.
Sixty.
Right, sixty dollars.
So I'm, I'm not sure. It's, it's twenty-five. Where, why?
Well, the top one, but the non-residential. No, proposed, what they're proposing, that's the current.
Okay, currently it's fifty. If you're in, if you're resident for a pavilion, it's currently fifty. If you're, now the proposed is sixty-five, which is fifteen dollars.
And for a non-resident, it's.
Which is currently one hundred. And if you're, and, and the proposed is one twenty-five, which is twenty-five dollars.
And that wasn't.
She's just talking from the morning to the next Marion before.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but you have to compare them one, you know, it's a twenty-five dollar increase over the current.
I get it.
I get it too.
No, it's, it's twenty-five, approximately twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Because what you're increasing.
This is about twenty-five dollars from the current. So, you know, you compare the pavilion to the pavilion, not the pavilion to the pavilion and bathrooms because that's not a, that's not the comparison that works. So, uh, Mr. Regu?
I mean, you check this, when you said Niskun in Rotterdam or?
And, um, as a matter of fact, I checked it down. West Platteville, they're no longer renting out because it was, um, it was, um, a losing proposition and a very messy proposition for a lot of them. Uh, the, the fire departments particularly. And I asked them, just the ballpark, what their rates were. And they were, they were much higher than this for non-resident fees.
Mr. Coach?
But those are groves as well. They're not just parks. The, the two that you were just referring to are actually groves. And so you're telling me that Niskun is charging four hundred forty dollars for one of their parks to use the park?
It is, it was charging last year for just the use of the pavilion. Um, it was a hundred dollars.
Use the pavilion only?
Only, and that's it. And now their, their fees are going up. And that's a, a resident fee.
So let me continue. I just don't want us to get outpriced. If we're gonna, I don't want us to overprice ourselves, Camille, and then people are gonna shy away from using our park because we're not in the ballpark. What did we bring in last year? About thirty-five hundred dollars, I think, for the, for the park, for Simon's Park? I think it was thirty-five hundred? Thirty-four, yeah, so I was close, thirty-five hundred. I don't know. I, I look at the, the, I just think they're too high.
Ms. Perez?
Well, I also think, uh, an important point here is we're talking about Friday evening to Sunday evening, which are key, like prime times. So during the week, the fees stay the same. But when we're talking, I mean, how do we begin to do not have someone that's doing that and working for it? Right, so if they can't make the numbers work and we're talking about prime time, when people want to be there, especially non-residents, why shouldn't we allow them to collect the fees that will make it solvent for them? You know, um.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Again, I think this is a great debate because you go back four years, nobody went to that park.
Right.
There's no reason.
Correct.
Camille, the team that was in place, it had really been part of a transformational engagement. And now there is an interest. People wanna come there. You're seeing it here in Steinmetz, you're seeing it Woodlawn, seeing upgrades doing Jerry Burrell in Central Park. And so I think, uh, again, based on Camille's experience in the team there, that these are fair numbers. And just going forward, you know, we'll monitor it, see what happens this year and can adapt it, uh, in the future.
If everything remains the same, excuse me, everything remains the same.
Camille, if you step forward, I can't see.
I'm sorry. Um, I should add that, uh, like for the nonprofits and the schools that, that use, um, use the park, you know, for, for their, their retirement parties and everything, um, it, the fees remain the same. Uh, it just is exactly as, as stated, twenty-five dollars. And then, you know, we, we comped a few, to be told, last year. And, uh, you know, it's the only fair thing to do, giving back, giving back to the community in some, some ways.
And, and we've also shown, I mean, the parks have significant improvements and continues to do that. So, um, I, I have no opposition to, uh, considering the agrees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll do this by resolution then, to be a resolution to, uh, that we would increase the fees then?
And we're calling for a public hearing for the.
And yes, we would, that would be, um, security deposit would be included in the current public hearing?
Right.
We can't do a resolution until after Monday.
Oh, until after Monday.
Yeah. If you pass one that would go into effect on the other resolution.
If you pass one that would go into effect on the other resolution, signed by Mayor, point that way, three, three, five.
Let's do it. We're pretty comfortable that's gonna happen. All right, okay.
Or you can pass it to the attorneys, then I'll sign the one first, and the other one out.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before health and recreation?
Yes, I just like, some of us are aware, there's, there's cricket being played on the Mount Pleasant field. And I got a call from a couple of the neighbors, and apparently, people that are using are saying they have a permission from the school district to use that. So, I think we have to delineate whose property is whose there, because the city's been cleaning it up, at least. There was one good cleanup there last year. So, do we build a school district then if we have to go and clean it up because neighbors are complaining? I'm not sure what the story is here, but it's kinda confusing on who's supposed to be there, not be there. Do they have permission to use it from the school district? Can they ask for a permit if the police go there? I don't know. I'm confused. But it seems like we have to, I think, just know whose property is whose. Where's the borderline there? I think the old street that used to go through there years ago has to be city property. So, way to the left has to be city property, closest to eight ninety.
But you're facing the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're right, back, if you're on Norwood.
It would be on the right.
Yeah, it's the city property.
Yeah.
And I'm not quite sure, that's been part of the debate, where is the city property? Where is the school district property? So, sometimes I'd come to the city asking permission, and sometimes I accept the permission from the school district. But, yeah, it is an ongoing issue.
So, now, the email that, that I saw said that they were coming in from Education Drive, which is clearly all the way on the other side. I don't know where they were playing, but, but the email, the person who said, you know, clearly said Education Drive, which is way on the other side, you know? So.
That's where they were playing?
That, they said they saw the cars on Education Drive. It was all, that was the only place they mentioned they, there was no mention unless someone else has heard other, there was no mention about Norwood at all. It was all about concern, Education Drive. And my, so, you know, I, when I saw the email, I asked, I called to see if I could figure out, and I found out that it was connecting softball cricket. And I asked the question if they had a permit, and the answer was from the school district. Yes, they did.
Did you get this from the school district or from that?
No, I got it from, from the individual, the league that was there. And I further asked, you know, was there loud music? Was there drinking going on? Did you clean the place up? I mean, I asked the questions that, to my understanding, was what the concerns were. And again, the email said nothing about any of those things. It meant that there was a cricket game going on, and I was told that none of those things happened. So, based on what I was told, and I, like I said, no one has, to my knowledge, has the speed of that at this time, so.
Well, if it just started, there may be, you know, something that's gonna come up. But I know at least some of the neighbors were under the impression that wasn't gonna be used anymore because of the problems that happened there last year, with cars parked on the field, a mess left there. There seems to be a concern of what were old pictures, what are new pictures?
Right.
I know the pictures, they were sent to me by an ex-police officer, sent me the pictures. They were from when it happened last year, and the city snap crew had to go in there and clean it up.
There's video too.
So, my concern is who's responsible for this? Is the ci, if the city has to clean it up, do we build a school district? I think we're gonna have to delineate again. Either it's all in one person's charge, or, you know, one school district or the city's charged, one or the other. Because how are we gonna impose, if they need a security deposit for the cleanup, how do we do this? You know, on, on the city end, who's, who's gonna pay?
Well, I'm guessing that they only play on the school district property. I have no idea. Again, I wasn't.
It's always hard to figure that one out.
So, yes, Ms. Perez.
So, is this a fourth league?
Um, no, it's, it's a league that also plays in Ground Park, but I guess there's, you're limited to the number of games you'd be playing in Ground Park at any one time.
So, we really have a soft placement for all the cricket?
No, so there, so, because you can only play, there's a limit to how many games you can play in Ground Park, is how I understand. So, there was, they were on to play, simultaneously play more than two games, and so therefore, the other game was played on school property at, behind Mount Pleasant. So.
Maybe how the school district?
I have not, I actually went to the school district today, and no one seemed to know exactly, because I go to run monkeys anyway, with the girl circle. But no one seemed to know the answer to that, so I'm gonna, I'll try to see if somebody can give me the answer.
Nobody said permit, they said permission. So, I don't know that the school district gives it permission. So, that was one of my questions. And the person who emailed said that, in my follow-up, that it was okay the other day, but the neighborhood is obviously very concerned because of past experiences.
And I think that's a fair, fair concern. But I think if going forward, it, you know, if you, if you tell people, listen, these are our concerns, you know, and we need to correct this behavior, and that behavior's corrected, then, and as long as it's not all the parking on the other side of the street, and it's only used in the field that belongs to the school district, and all the other concerns don't come up again, hi, guys.
I'm sorry, then I think maybe the field should be marked off with pylons or something saying, this is city property, this is school property, just in case. Because I think generally what happens is migrates through the whole area there, because it's, it's not that big an area. So, I don't know if they were playing on the old football field, I don't know where they were playing. I can't tell you.
Only?
Usually, they play in that open area that's closest to the fence line, you know, that, that borders Norwood.
Right. But again, the email said they came in from Education Drive, which is clear on the other side.
But I think that's the only way you really can come at it.
Well, no, because there was, I mean, it's the only way you can come in, but there was all this parking before on Norwood. So, this time, the, all the parking on Norwood did not happen. So, the parking was happening, which makes sense, there's a huge lot over there, on Education Drive. So, I, Mayor, I'm not sure how we move forward in terms of trying to decide, you know, to delineate whose field is whose, if something up, I'm not sure how that would really work. So.
Have engineering look at, I'm looking to do a survey of the property to take a general, look at it, where would be appropriate some delineation.
Back to my memory, when I was going to school there, I think it's.
The good old days.
Yeah, it's pretty simple. There was a road that went all the way through Pleasant Valley, right through the Skyler Street. So, that obviously is city property. Then there was a fence that went all the way around from that road towards the school. That was school property. So, I think it's only where that road used to be, and I don't remember the name of that road at the time. If it was Skyler Street, I don't remember, because when eight ninety was built, then the road disappeared. Yep, we used it as a dump. So, I think that's would be the city property part. So, maybe engineering can figure out kind of easily.
And I'll, I'll follow up with the school district to make sure that they had permission, whether it was a physical commitment, or how they decide that, that people can actually do that. And again, I think it's something that the neighbors could, if, just kinda keep an eye on, if it doesn't come out of hand, and it's just a game that goes on, like any type of game that, you know, we just continue to move forward.
Other questions and concerns? All right, and I'll get back to you in terms of the school district. Anyone else? Anything else to come before health and recreation?
Will you turn? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
You'll turn. Thank you.
Okay, I will call over the committee on city development and planning. Few items here. First one's a presentation of the 2016-17 annual action plan amendment. And Chris, I guess you're coming up for this?
This is a, it's not a presentation, but it is an amendment. So, I'm sorry, confusing, I guess, with that headline there. So, what it is, this is an amendment to the 2016-17 federal, this year, not that, going into, to move, to reperjust $150,000 from the paving of city streets to be put towards the construction of a bathroom at the Central Park tennis complex. Bathroom is something that is needed in the area, to be ADA accessible with storage. Also, they have a need for secure area ticketing. The building will have a ticketing window, security screens, ticketing for, for Central Park. Another thing is, no streets are being term taping list, or maybe not, a reduction in taping. We did get a good allocation of chips money, we do have a full rebound from last year. And on top of that, we did, as you know, have a very competitive bid in Callahan, so not, I think, last taping issue.
So, Chris, what's the timetable on this installation? Will we have it ready for this summer, or?
We have a very little bit of some, we're hoping, just met with the architect on that, picking a couple of things together. Yeah, we're hoping to have it for late summer. I don't know, the tennis season starts in June. If you've been up there, we've done quite a bit of work to put, we have the fencing complete, the coating is going down as we speak. They're starting to lay out the green. We've replaced all the old, failing retaining wall install steps. So, the, the primary goal was to get the court ready for the high school and for the fifteen love programs will start up in a couple of weeks, so we're on pace for that. And then this, this amendment here would help put that bathroom back on schedule so that we can start, as we have the, had a meeting in Florida. So, I don't have a time, exact timetable, but once we get this amendment passed, we're going to move right to the law.
It's gonna be on the west end of the courts, as you're looking at the courts, or George Rock Cornell?
It's gonna be, where the shed is centrally located on the main level, courts, floor level, courts.
Oh, right there.
Right there on the floor. Yeah, we're gonna have, we want it adjacent to the parking area, we're gonna be doing the parking area over probably in the next year, because it's a little, it's a little unsafe, I believe, with regards to the sightlines and speed when you come around that fair avenue, very wide with parking so far. John Puccio, we have some plans to kind of narrow that a little bit, make the field narrower, try to slow people down. And then, as you know, the installation, we're looking at doing some lighting there, how we can make some of these things also look at greenhouse. So, this is going to require, we're not using a separate field, we're using a grinder pump, so we're gonna locate the grinder pump adjacent to the greenhouse, so that the greenhouse in the future, they can tie into that. So, that's one of the things we're looking at, try to make sure that we're playing off of that greenhouse. Because it is, it is a very highly utilized area, it's this area of the park. And that's one of the things that you see is that, you know, we have a commitment for fifteen love, you know, every year. And I think when they see how it came out.
Be very happy.
They're, they're gonna love it, I think, be there for a while.
That's gonna be a ticket area, a ticketing area, so that's where people will purchase their tennis permits or pay to play tennis. So, have somebody staffed in that location.
Yep, so it's gonna be buildings, men's and women's rooms, and in the middle, they have a ticketing area towards storage, plan, you know, they, we made amenities to make sure if they ever want to have an ice machine or a locker area, they can have it in. It's not, it's not enormous, but what they have now is a, you know, is a woodshed. So, it's much more than that.
All right, any, did you have a hand up? Question?
Yeah, so, it's kind of where the shed is, is that, so, and, so it's outside the fence line?
Outside the fence line.
And is it gonna be, is it gonna have hours of operations? Is it gonna be open like when the other restrooms of the park are open, or?
That's one of the things we're working on, is what the actual hours of the evening of the park. They're gonna be open when the tennis courts are open, but I don't know if it's gonna be open similarly to like music haven events going on?
Yeah.
With the park, I don't know if we're gonna want that kinds, but it's something that we're talking with Jeremy about, because it was just like we were talking about with the greenhouse, is making sure that during greenhouse hours, they're open for that.
Yeah, especially at nighttime, and you have, go ahead, Ms. Perez.
Well, not that it's not, not that it's not in the weeds, but I suggested also some sort of key system, because they're single-use restaurants.
What system?
A key system, like to have, you know, have the, greenhouses have a key, have the tennis shack to have a key, because they're single-use restaurants, so.
Well, single stall.
Have them.
They're single, they're single, right.
Right, so if somebody goes in their locker, you know.
They will be designated male, female, or whether they are designed such in a way that they could be restroom A, restroom B, you know, they're not, they're not kind of separate.
Any other questions, concerns? Not relevant. Motion by, Mr. Mulderver, second?
I do have a question, though. So, because they're single-use, is there a reason that we're, you know, male, female, or is it, is it possible they're just general restaurants?
They could be, yes. No, I mean, literally, when we're all done, it's a sign on the door, how we wanna do that. For right now, that's what it is. And just one point and note too, is we did go with this because we think that it'll be, we didn't want to overdesign, sometimes we're very large events here. What we did have planned was, there is a large pad around the outside, so that when we have one of the larger tennis events, we're talking hundreds of people, that we can actually put porta-potties on the slab, against the building underneath the awning, so that we have the capacity to hold more people. And then, when the large event is gone, we can remove these things. But it was not fiscally, I'd say, responsible to design a bathroom in this area for 200 people, if we're only gonna have 500 people there. Quite some.
Yeah. That makes sense, that's good. Any other questions? So, it's moved by Mr. Mulderver, second by Ms. Corfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Reitman, looks like you're up here, the proposed CVG funding, seventeen eighteen.
Good evening, Council. The adoption, today, we're looking for the adoption of the 2017-2018 consolidated plan action plan. So, the adoption of the proposed 2017-2018 consolidated plan action plan, as we've got the final, 2017-2018 consolidated action, which will result in a city of Connecticut allocating $2,710,973 in funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. CVG, you, from a block grant, you, ST, emergency services, and, and, program for housing, public service, economic development, neighborhood, revitalization, and upwards activities.
All right, we're open for discussion at this point?
Everybody, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yes.
Did anyone see the email? And I had put forth some questions that everybody's receiving, please. Do you want to email?
Yep. Well, there are two items that I want to talk about. I mean, are we discussing, are we, are we still working on your email, or what are we moving on here first?
No, I'm not.
All right, so, two items I'd like to move on here is the Kingsway Community Center, senior center. I'd like to add an additional 15,000 to that line item, to bring them up to 30,000. And then, we're also looking to add 10,000 to the Boys and Girls Club with the Steinmetz Park program. That would be Quack and Bush Steinmetz Park Management. And we'd like to add an additional 10,000 onto that line as well. And are we going to comment on the HUD piece for the funding, or what are we looking to do with how, so we don't have to affect other programs for the conversation?
Getting started the process for the SR?
NSRA.
NRS, yeah. Get the acronym down, which will allow us to then move with that money.
Yes.
So, we receive verbal authorization for it, but there's a process we have to go through to do that, be able to do that in a time span, so that getting those additional modifications could make.
Okay, and that would mean that we wouldn't be affecting any of the current other funding or allocations that are here? or allocations that are here?
The proposal would stand as is with those modifications.
With those two that I'm only suggesting at this point, obviously.
And I should, also as a side note, I see a call from Senator Schumer's office this morning indicating that the package that was put together over the weekend for Congress to allow the federal budget to go through the end of September, the Senator's office said that our current CDVG funding level will remain intact. So we don't have to worry about short-term cuts for that. Even though from October 17 going forward is still an area of debate, discussion from what the President proposed, at least for the, largely the remainder of this year, that we won't have to deal with any drastic cuts and work within the outlines of what has been enacted before.
Okay, and if I could just, just to elaborate a little bit on the senior center, the Kingsway proposal. Again, that was with the Kingsway Community and the Inshore Order of Hibernians Hall. And as another group came and spoke about a senior center as well, this is something that certainly is gonna be very impactful to the entire residents here in the city of Schenectady. They also looked at the survey that was done by the Long Term Care and Services, that the need was there for, to provide services for our seniors in the city of Schenectady. Kingsway is certainly the perfect partner for this program, without a doubt. This is what they do professionally. They're talking about having a staff person there two days a week because that's what the proposal called for, just Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Hibernian Hall. And they provide the professional staffing for the senior center. And what they did, they looked at the model with Talonisk Unit. That is really what they're earmarking it after. Talonisk Unit, as big as they are, their senior center only meets twice a week as well, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And again, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. The partnership with the Hibernian Hall is where the Ladies Auxiliary and the Hibernians themselves will be preparing lunch for the seniors at a very low cost. They're talking about either $2 or $3. They are going to partner with a lot of our community businesses as well. The Blue Ribbon Diner is talking about doing some cooking classes there. We've got the library who is certainly looking to partner with us. We've got different folks who are looking to come and just do different programs with the seniors there. Certainly working closely with Annie Schaefer. That was a big partnership as well, making sure that they would be able to get seniors there. Kingsway does have transportation, but at this point, we're not looking to an October startup. Obviously, that's fun, earmarked. So not looking to start until then. But again, they're gonna work through that and do a community needs assessment survey as well. Again, piggybacking on what Talonisk Unit has, they actually sent a survey out to all their senior residents, asking them these particular questions. What are you looking for, what services, what days of operation? The reason I found that out is because my daughter just purchased a home in the town of Skionna. They thought it was on Schenectady, incidentally, it's on the Plaza. But the gentleman there was 85 years old prior to, and that's where the survey came from. So it'll be very interesting. I think it's a great pilot start. There's no question that the other proposal is very good as well. But I think if we start relatively small, again, big difference in the cost of operations as well. And they're looking to, it's right on the bus line, transportation will be available down the road. And they could partner with all the city residents, that's what's important. And no membership fee either, I read in the application. There's absolutely no charge to be part of this either, 55 and older. So you don't qualify.
For a while.
So I think it'll be a great partnership. And then with Boys and Girls Club as well, they do a great program with Steinmetz Park. And, oh, Camille left, I guess, was ready, right? Okay, so she's gone. Great program over there, what they're doing. And again, they're looking for additional administrative costs to help oversee the schedule. As the mayor said earlier, we went from a park that had virtually no use at all to now every weekend, as Ms. Prazo noted, that that pavilion is being used and occupied. I think it's wonderful that that's happening. So again, the proposal to bump them up a little bit to provide that extra staffing and support for that group as well. And that would be partnered through the Boys and Girls Club. As Camille mentioned, Luis de Fabio is the one that actually does oversee that whole reservation part, if you will. So those are the two items that I've had concerns with. Anybody else, any other concerns or recommended changes or something we're talking about? None at all? All right, so if we can move with just those two additions? Curtis, all right, is that all right with you? And Mr. Mayor, you're fine with it too, I'm assuming?
Yes.
All right, so I just need a motion to move this to the floor next week?
So moved.
Mr. Mulderverin? Ms. Porfield, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that moves on that, thank you very much. And I believe there's a couple other items here, some ceremonial resolutions? So let's go on down, we have two ceremonial resolutions, both by Ms. Prazo, the Schenectady Business and Professional Women's, the 90th anniversary?
Yeah, they're both very straightforward. Schenectady BTW is having an 90th anniversary and the Junior League is having their 85th anniversary.
85th?
Yep.
Wow. And are they gonna come here or are you going to a gala or what are we thinking?
Both of them.
They're gonna come here, so it'll be here present.
I don't know that, whether they'll want to come in this coming Monday or the second cycle, but we might as well pass it now and then they can take their choice.
Very good, okay. Any questions, discussion? Moved, I need a motion to move. Ms. Porfield, second by Mr. Mulderverin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and...
You moved both?
Yeah, moved them both at once, yes. Quick here. All right, we'll move the first one. First one, we move professional women. We're both coughing here. First, I'm all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now the Junior League, same way. Ms. Porfield, Mr. Mulderverin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I guess we can do the planning commissions, right? Is that... We don't need executive session for that, right?
We've got three revocables on there.
What happened to the revocable permits?
Well, that's right, that's not, that's not executive session, is it?
No.
My apologies. Okay, so let's do that one. The High Class Deli and Grocery on Crane Street. Chris, are you still, yeah, you're still here. You got three in a row, sir. Crane, Union, and State.
They're moving up.
High Class Deli.
That's my recent, one of the things here. With regard to the amendment, it's a call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, May 27. That's what it actually says in the recommendation. So I know that we didn't physically say those words, but I wanted to make sure that we're okay with moving forward with that because CDVG amendment seems to be a public hearing.
That's necessary, Carl?
That's necessary. So on to...
All right, very good, thank you. So Crane Street.
High Class Deli on Crane Street.
Yes.
This is a bit of a unique package. This is not a sign, this is actually a fan unit. It was recommended by the Code Department that they get a revocable permit as right of way is kind of right where that crack in the sidewalk is. It does hang a little bit of it. It is seven feet to the bottom, pretty good sized unit. Brand new, it's been installed. They did have a fan there previously, it just wasn't this big. Coes has inspected it, they say that it is structurally sound. And it's the only way that they can have their business as they have a kitchen area right behind this wall. So I am moving forward with that, we do have their insurance.
Good, good.
Any questions or concerns?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now on to Union Street.
This is a New Maria's Cafe. Previously was a corner market on the corner of Gates and Union. They like to put a round cafe and catering sign up over the door. It's pretty typical for this kind, no issues with it.
Any questions or concerns?
I'll move this.
Mr. Mulderverin, second, Ms. Porfield, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Downtown Schenectady, 143 State.
DSIT Downtown, it is a general lit sign that will hang underneath their awning shown here. Again, no, no more concern from Engineering or planning about this sign.
All right, moved by Ms. Porfield, second, Mr. Mulderverin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Way. I think you're off the hook for the rest of the day. Have a good evening. Item number eight, deployments to the planning commission. Mr. Mayor.
Somebody for your consideration, two individuals. Ryan Bailey, who worked in the law department, who recently went back to private practice. And Kristen Dia, who's, apparently didn't get to the package. She has served at part of some recreation advisory group. Previously was supported by the council and recommended her at this point to go with planning commission. It's in the stockade, it's a, it's an architect. Get a copy of it, it's in the to be, tomorrow.
Ms. Porfield?
So, I'm sorry, her name was, what was it?
Kristen Dia.
Okay, Kristen. So she's no longer going to be on the recreation advisory, she has her term up?
Uh, she's currently still on it. We get the switch over, I think she would phase out at the other, so there would be some overlap, sure.
So, and that there, and there would be empty seats there and...
Correct.
All right. Thought she did good work there, so I'm kind of like, that's here, fell.
I'm moving... I still, I got a, I was looking for more questions. Any other questions? So, Mr. Mayor, these are taking the spots of what two individuals who are leaving?
Miller, who, yeah, she's leaving, left the city. And Sarah Bonakis, who also moved out of the city. They've resigned, so these are just vacancies.
So do we still have one more remaining by any chance? Another opening by any chance or?
I think we do.
We do? Somebody's jumping in here? No?
Somebody said yes, yes.
Okay, so if we have a recommendation, who should this, who should we get their recommendation? To you or to?
I mean...
To you.
So there's one more in addition to when Kristen leaves? Or there's one currently and then when Kristen leaves, there'll be another?
There's two now.
I believe there's three.
But there weren't.
So we're looking, fill two and then another name to you in the next cycle. People have somebody they'd like to be considered.
All right. Any other questions? So...
So we're moving both of one or?
Move me.
Move them individually, yeah.
Move them both, right?
One individually.
Individually? Okay, all right, so we'll move on, Mr. Bailey's name first?
Second.
Second, Ms. Mulderverin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, forgive me, what's her name again that we're moving? Kristen Dia. We do gotta get the resume to us, all right? All right, we can get that to us.
Get it to you, yeah.
We didn't get it, I didn't get it yet.
No, you've had it before for a prior.
Well, I don't keep that stuff.
And I'm comfortable second because I had her resume when she went on the recreation.
Very good, all right. Move Mr. Mulderverin, second, Ms. Porfield, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And is there anything else to come before our committee before we move into executive session? Go ahead.
There's one thing that I thought was gonna be on here, but it's for executive session anyway. I just wanted to entertain it and after publicly before going into executive session, so bidding contracts for property building demolitions that the city recently put out, received bid for last week. I questioned Richard on that, he said it wasn't ready. It's right.
So you have all the information for us then? Because we have nothing here.
I have information for you, but I think it would be sufficient. And if it's not, then I'll provide other information. But I only asked to put it on today because it's, we're not the only time sensitive project.
Who on board?
These are four properties related to Gateway Plaza Park, which was built down by SEC.
Knocking down, cleaning them out, very good. Okay, are we fine with that? Well, I'm not the exact session. Okay, so I need a motion to move into executive session for our committee, please. Just, oh, question again.
Our attorney is here, claims first, because he's, looks like he's disabled.
Who are we looking at?
Our attorney.
Oh, yes.
The tour, for the...
Wait a minute, is he part of the claim?
He may be.
You didn't fall on our sidewalks.
He's been getting arrested lately.
All right, don't fall on our sidewalks. All right, so let me adjourn my, adjourn my meeting, correct? Recess, recess my committee. So motion to recess, Mr. Mulderverin, second, Ms. Porfield, all in favor, say aye. We are recessed.
And I'll call for claims and ask for inspections, poll manning, school zones.
If it's across those lines. Right? It's across those lines.
Thanks.
You're not putting the blame on her.
All right.
Looks pretty good in there, see, Carl?